All order and welcome. Commissioner Frasier Lyons, Commissioner Kappa.
Present.
Commissioner Meissen.
Present.
Commissioner Pennell.
Present.
Commissioner Razik.
Present.
Commissioner Repelik.
Present.
And Commissioner Mappus is present. Okay, approval of the agenda, we're going to add, under approval of the minutes, add each main minutes. Can I add something else?
You sure?
Public comments and agenda items. Do you want to put it under whole business? What needs to be about that, like between communication and matters of consideration? Okay, everyone good?
Yes.
Motion to approve the agenda to either. So would change of support. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so approval of the minutes, we'll start with the main minutes. Did everybody have a chance to read those over on your email? Or do you have some, Trace? Oh, we're gonna have to catch them up here. Say again? The main minutes, did you bring a hard copy here? Everyone has a copy at their place.
I'm ready to make a motion to approve this.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, June 5th, 2018 minutes. How it goes?
Motion to approve the June 5th minutes. Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, communication correspondence workshop, is this where you'd like to speak, Trace? Communications? Oh, communications, yes. So, does everyone have a village email?
Yes, I need to get it.
So, do you know what a hat hat?
I do now.
See, okay. So, I am making a suggestion that that is our form of communication through a village email, unless maybe it's a social connection, and we use personal emails, but starting to be more well communicated via that vehicle. So, suggestion. I don't think it means ODM. No? Okay. Okay, now Steve, show you, let us know if you're all set up.
Yeah, I'll contact her Thursday or Friday. Actually, we'll be ready next week.
Thank you. Okay, matters for consideration, Ryan's not here tonight, but we have clarified homeowners association input to build a permit for permit request. This was just something we discussed at the table that was kind of misconstrued when it went to council, so there's a bit of a hang up on it. It was, the process, if everybody recalls, where the homeowners association would sign off prior to residents coming here for a permit. I just wanted to follow up with it. It's still sort of hanging, so I want to have to chat with Ryan to represent that. He represented it more in depth of like checking PUDs and a lot for Lori that really we didn't discuss with the people or have any expectations of. I think it's just a little misinformed there, so.
I guess I did have an expectation that it was going to cover PUDs and what's being presented to be built within the subdivision as far as a home.
I think from the village perspective, it's basically to a sign off from the associations that they did that sort of work. That Lori's not going to be the one doing that legwork in the office, because that would be, it would be more so, the homeowners association has done the research, we say yes, this is okay by our standards, and then Lori will go forward.
So, if the homeowners association has not sent anything to the building department, does the building department still issue?
Well, it's hung up right now, because it was never, it was never, there was no direction from council to go further with it because of the elaboration of what was expected from the building department. It was a little heavy. And I think it would be as simple as they would have to have a letter from the HOA saying that this parcel, this permit, like have you, is meeting our standards and is acceptable, and that's presented to the office whoever's taking that in. I think that, because that makes the HOA accountable.
Yes, but is the building department, has never denied a, or are they going to start, I mean?
It'd be part of the process. It would be a part of the process that if they don't come in, it would make a necessary before they can come over here. It would make a clearance from the homeowners association necessary before they come in.
I mean, currently, building permits, as far as decks, that's as, anything that you have to draw a permit from the village is not accepted unless it has a homeowners approval.
It'd be the same standard. And I will share too, that if I understood this correctly, that even once we present it to council, it still needs legal review to see that. Right, was that correct, it still needs legal review too?
Yes, because of how it was presented to council, it gave the impression that you wanted this department to interpret your PUDs and all your other legal documents, and that's not what we're gonna do.
No, I mean, that's their responsibility, I think it's, HOA has to sign off on it, just like they sign off on everything else.
Yeah, the HOA has to do their homework. Right now, we currently use for fences and decks and stuff like that, based on the letters that we receive from the HOA. But as far as the actual house and, you know, the exterior and all those kind of things, no, we just, we don't get into that.
I think that's what we want, right, we just want to add the actual house on that checklist, right? I mean, any permit, HOA should have approval on. Is that, so does that have to go to council as a quest? Or should it just be happening because every other permit is done?
No, it shouldn't just be happening. The builder and his house, they meet all of our requirements, as far as size and set backs and all those kind of things. The HOAs have their own requirements as far as exterior, fences, and, you know, some of those things. And, and we're not here to interpret what the HOA is requiring. Because I understand if someone says that a house has to be nine hundred square feet, that that's how a minimum, four twelve pence on the roof. That's it.
So, the HOA should contact the builder individually and say, hey, you need to bring your designs to us, or we're not going to sign off on it.
I think that's some discussion that, it's not understanding that some of the HOAs are habitable to try to put that process, that step in the process.
That's one part of it, we also need the village to also back us up, actually say us, back up the HOA if, if they, if the village is not gonna follow the HOA rules. So, just add that step in there.
That I agree with. But the problem that we're having, it doesn't appear that the HOA is, is concrete on what they're in conflict with. Okay, because I, I've heard discussions that, you know, they shouldn't be doing this, but we like that. Don't complain about it.
That's the HOA's problem, like that's right to go to the manager.
Yeah, and so we don't want to get in the middle of that portion of, the HOA needs to have very defined, very concrete requests, and that request needs to be made to the council. The request that was made to council went way outside of what was discussed here.
Okay.
Let me ask you today, is there any sort of ordinance or law or anything that says that for the decks, the pools, the fences, that the village waits for, is waiting for, or is that just kind of like a, we said so, so just do it that way?
There are requirements, yes.
Is it an ordinance or what?
Yes.
Okay. Maybe we should modify that ordinance to say, any building permit, or maybe it already says that.
No, it doesn't say that. See, like any building permit, any permit that was made to here, we don't particularly know, nor do we care who it's coming from. But being that the HOAs have their own requirements, these are a step that has to be added to the process. But it has to be clear, and we'd even ask our attorney to start taking a look at it, see if we, as a municipality, have any say-so or right to give involvement in the process. Because, you know, it could cause, I mean, it could create some legal challenge to the village if we stick our nose into it without having the right to do that.
I agree with you, but, but an HOA could, does have the, they could stop someone from building. You know what I mean, they could go to court and have a, a house starts.
Yes.
And it's not following what the bylaws say.
Yes.
The HOAs can't go in, have an injunction put in to stop building, and that would be good for the village either, so.
So, see, that's happened, right?
Right, but I'm just saying that, that publicity, that negative, that would not, we don't.
It's not good for the village or the builder.
Correct, we want progress.
You know, I mean, I would hope that the builder would be communicating with the HOA and trying to come to some agreement of what is acceptable and what's doable. And that's what occurred.
But I think, you know, I just want to add too, like, because there are a couple, there's three of us here that are on boards, but I think proceed with caution and hold enough construction in yourself. I mean, make sure it does follow the, you know, that there is a, not just, and I know you guys know this, but not just that we don't like it, that it's just, it's truly not following. Correct. A guideline that you have in place, because, you know, you do hear a lot of people saying, you know, some of us people just don't like it, and there's really no basis for, for it not happening, other than with distaste.
So, I, as my question to those who are on boards, is it the size, the style, the exterior finishes? What is the most recent, or what is the common complaint?
Well, you had spoken about there was a small issue at Pembroke, that they had changed the facade and test of the homes, but then they went back.
Well, that was, see, here we go again, based on consent judgment, that was agreed to by the village back in 2010.
Right.
Okay, they didn't have to follow them.
Correct.
Okay. So, you know, so there's these legal cases that are out there that have been, you know, challenged or agreed upon, you know, by past administrations that give the builders, you know, the rights not to do these certain things, that your PUD or your whatever may require. Now, I know that applies to Pembroke.
I'm pretty confident though, that's not gonna happen moving forward. Would you agree with that?
No, I can't say that.
Sitting, with you sitting in the seat that you're sitting in, you feel pretty confident that we're not, because that was a little side deal that was managed.
Yeah, yeah, when it comes to Pembroke, but I have not been involved in, in, or been asked to get involved in anything, say, pertaining to the Cora. You know, I have not been included in any discussions with the Cora. Pembroke, yes, I was asked, but I, I found out what was going on, and I stuck my nose in it.
I guess I'm still confused why the village still doesn't have any control over, because when they came to the village, they, they applied for a PUD. They presented all their own plans that they were gonna build. The village approved those whole plans. So, the plans that have come through since then have not been approved to the PUD. And, you know, in various places, like the Mass, they give what, forty-five permits pulled in in one day in Amherst before a president left office, so that, you know, they just built those homes in the middle of another change in administration. You know, like you're talking about the past. But if, if these homes are approved by the planning commission in the first place, that this is what you're supposed to build here, then why isn't that just enforced through the village that if that's what?
That's the question that the village turn their head and ask, are we the enforcement agency?
This can't be unique to me, I mean, there's HOA everywhere. So, I mean, I think we're asking that question right now, but I'm sure this is a simple answer that's been resolved. So, under other circumstances, people, so it has a reason not to wheel.
Well, we don't want to stop them, we don't want to give a greater, I think we have a project giving such a great authority to an HOA that a few people can, can stop development. I mean, I'm not saying the boards are good, I'm not saying the boards are bad, I'm saying I've seen some really weird choices over the years made by just a couple individuals. And if there are those people in control and we make this decision to say, hey, you didn't get our approval, Lombardo, for example, you can no longer build in Decora, do you want to give the homeowners association? There has to be something solid, you know, as a.
If the enforcement arm is going to be the village, then the enforcement arm can be the village, and maybe the HOA can also play another thing within the communities.
And should the HOA just follow the PUD or the plan?
Yes, then absolutely. Yeah, the cut.
I think we're talking about if it's gonna be a simple answer, I'm pretty sure it's.
Yeah, I'm sure there's, I'm sure you're right, there's probably happened a thousand times before.
Now, I'm talking to other communities, like putting in amenities and doing certain things, all those things are managed through the community. That they have to complete these things before they can, you know, build. Because the trails haven't finished in the Decora part, I don't, there's a stuff in Amherst that hasn't been completed. There's stuff promised at Pembroke, but those things are just there, and no one's doing, you know, the builder is not providing those additions.
And the responsibility of who?
Well, in other, talking to other communities through the course that we took, all the other communities I talked to, it was the community that was in the place.
The municipalities.
The municipalities that they were in. And Shelby was very, they had a lot of problems with Lombardo at that time.
So, you're saying municipalities are coming into the communities and enforcing the requirements within those communities?
Right, the PUD. Not necessarily the ILOs, but the PUD, which the village, the planning commission would anger.
So, for example, if they said they were gonna build a fountain in Pembroke, and they haven't built that fountain yet, it is up to the municipality to say, wait, where's the fountain? We haven't seen the fountain yet. Now, with that being said, there are a lot more layers in Shelby, don't you, than there are here at the village. So, you know, they have the luxury of being able to keep tabs on everything, I mean, let's be honest, it's.
Well, you guys, I'm gonna say that's a question that, that, you know, I will throw at the attorney. Because, you know, that's, that's probably my major responsibility, it's human, it's out of office.
Or is it a state now? For Pembroke, like with the fountain, you're saying, is there a stipulation in there saying that fountain would be the last thing we build? It was the last house to build, and we build a fountain, or is it, five houses ago we built a fountain?
And there's probably a plan that they have presented, because they do, and they got a lot of laborers in Shelby, so those plans go over more than once, I'm sure, and countless. So, they can have a little bit more control, we have a smaller scale here, so we have to keep our requirements, not in the minimum, but the task was in the minimum.
So, I'm wondering what you're thinking, what you're saying about the trail? I'm wondering where that states, that the trail, when would the trail be completed? It's probably with phases, I'm guessing.
That's, that's probably.
The Amherst roads are all, they're all plotted out with phases, so there's probably certain amenities in those certain phases. Like the rest of the Decore Trail, I'm sure is tied to that other phase that has to open it.
Right.
But the Decore North Trail should be built, and I don't know about the Decore North Trail. You know, the trail reaches from our trail all the way out to Target Street, is the way it was drawn. But the municipality was, was doing those things, and they were, they, they were on top of those things, because Lombardo wasn't doing those things, just like they don't do them here, because until someone cracked at the supervisor in Shelby, he wasn't, you know, on top of those things. That's just a question for Lombardo, simple, hey? I'm not gonna build it. How's the trail looking, where we at?
There you go.
I mean, it might be that simple. So, I think we could talk about this for hours, but it sounds like we should let our attorney look into it, and then we'll give a report back to council and see what they discover, and then we can table a discussion for that. Well, one thing I'd love to say is that this community is what it is, and if we build up all the lots and let them do whatever we want versus getting what we originally were bargaining for, and that value of a house, and that size of a house, and that quality of a house, you can't replace that, will never recoup those tax dollars ever again for this community. So, if we don't build smart now, and we just let them do what they do, I mean, because I had a hard time personally getting a loan on my house because of houses in Amherst, because the square footage was all over the basement, I couldn't get a loan on my house. I mean, that is a detriment to everybody here, which I think lowered our values more than some other communities that had consistency of what was square footage was. Versus, you know, oh, the windows, you know, three feet above the ground, what have you, that caused us to dip faster than others. But by just going off our Facebook in Decora, the older homes are getting a pretty good boost. Did I read something about a $240,000 sale? But the brand new house being built next to that $240,000 house doesn't hit 200,000? That's not true, they're also over 200,000. Every single one is sold for over $200,000. Even the Rachel's.
That's bad.
Yeah, I think one sold over $200,000. I'm just going by what I see in the. Starting price, if you're watching, but. That's probably what you're seeing, starting. Everyone that looked at it has been over $200,000. So, I think it's, the average home was putting in like $30,000 to $35,000, $40,000. That's probably what you're seeing is starting price.
So, I just want to clarify, so Chris, you are gonna have a discussion with your attorney about if we can continue with this process, correct? If it can be done, or do you want some?
They're already looking at the original question, but I think the fact that, now we're talking about the amenities and everything else, you know, who's enforcing those, you know, so I'm gonna have to expand their research.
They say amenities, it sounds different, but it's all in the PUD, like including that, so I just use that overarching term of who's enforcing the PUD. And that can be answered a million questions, right?
Actually, if I could, have you experienced this, Jeff?
Have not experienced it, but what we see a lot of communities do as, in the PUD process, when you're, when the community is initially sitting down and building, negotiating what's going to be in there, there is a, there is a written contract of the PUD document between the community and that of the builder. Many communities will make the builder bond or provide surety bonds on items, like the vinyl lift of the roads and those things. And those are what they're really actually, in most communities, enforcing, because it becomes the final sign off and permitting of the entire project in the site. So, some communities will say, you know, we're gonna have you put, you know, on the site $20,000, hold these dollars to make sure those amenities go in, so that you have something to enforce on them. That's, that's one of the needs of doing that. Other, other times, those, those elements can be written into the PUD that for each development, you have specific development regulations, and you can assign the roles of who's gonna be responsible for that. But it varies, I mean, the document, the PUD document can vary.
Well, should that be in our, going forward, our ordinance on PUDs, a process of what will be done so that we don't experience this issue again?
You know, as we were talking, I read through the section on PUDs.
And we're there now.
It is, but it's very, it's very clear from the zoning aspect of what planning commission has to do in it. What you're really talking about is administrative policies of the building department and the permit. It really becomes a permitting process, I believe. And the attorney may tell us differently, but I think in that process of applying for it, applying for the original site plan, we review it from the zoning aspect, but to ensure all those things get done, it really becomes an administrative function of the back office of building.
And we get there eventually.
Well, if we get there eventually after all of them are built, then it's kind of a, a none.
Right, but then, I know, but the unfortunate thing is, is that there, these were the first subdivisions in this area. I'm sure a lot of people didn't have a lot of experience dealing with this.
Prior to these three.
Right, so unfortunately, the developers kind of had the driver's seat, and, I mean, we were all this.
I came to those meetings back, right, in 2002, 2003, when that stuff was going on, because that's where we were looking to come here. That was our first taste of new handling.
I get what you're saying.
The board was very thorough in going through the housing plans and the development plans and everything that was laid out into it, that this is what was gonna be done.
I understand that.
But as new administrations came, those things.
But if your PUD's spelled out, like what Jeff was just saying, do your PUDs spell out specifically who's responsible for what?
Good question.
Right.
That was a question that.
If the PUD's approved by the village, wouldn't it be the village, since they approved it?
But it needs to say that.
If the PUD spelled out specifically who's responsible for what, it has to be in black and white, not as an assumption. Okay, it has to say, you are, we are, the village is. And I just assumed that.
Okay, so let's go forward here, so we can move on. The legal opinion is being sought, and hopefully we can get that by next month, maybe.
Oh, I'm sure. Can I please request that if Lombardo comes in looking for 120 building permits before some decision comes down, that the, the village puts a stop to?
I'm not sure what you're saying.
Yeah, but they can't.
I'm taking a pass, and each administration.
I'm here for my pass.
I'm just saying that.
I don't live yesterday.
I know, but I'm saying Lombardo.
You're invited.
It's Lombardo, well, no, I was here. Lombardo went and pulled 60 permits in Amherst to say, hey, I'm building all these houses, and didn't have a single sale. That's what I'm saying, because he was fearful of being stopped by a new administration.
I think we all agree that past practice wasn't exactly.
Past practice was not.
Yeah.
No, but I think an example of past practice doesn't get repeated, is what I'm saying.
Right, and I, I'm sure that, you know, we're in a much better place and.
Who's on the Cora board? Do I think there's a meeting coming up?
Brian, Brian, yeah, I mean, there are meetings with Lombardo, I think on the night. I forget what day it is, I don't know. Monday.
Has that not been conducted, Kyle?
Why, why, I'm sure that day.
Because I was, I had asked to be invited to the meeting, because I want to be able to sit in and try to see first.
I'm not sure, Ryan's in the board, I'm not on the board anymore, but.
I'm not sure whether Brian's in the board, not on the board yet, but, um, I can find out for you, I'll make sure you know where it is, but the, I think the purpose, what was communicated on the, the Facebook group was that their meeting with them to discuss the, the, the oil and phase, you know, in my house, they're gonna, they wanna include that into the existing Decor Park HOA, so there's some paperwork that has to be taken care of, yes, and negotiations on that.
Okay, council update, moving on, administrative changes, just an update, um, they were presented to council at the last meeting, they are with the attorney for review.
Yes, the change of the wording and as a change of, as a change of the wording require publishing.
Jeff?
That is, that's the question that's being asked, I'm sorry.
That's the question that, that, you know, we asked the attorney to make sure that the change, the change that wording from administrative to, it was just two words or whatever that was being changed.
To administrative, there were, there were some other changes that were made.
Did that require that the whole ordinance be published?
Yeah, it wasn't just that change, it was small changes too.
Yeah, Brian mentioned that they were concerned about these mass publishings constantly and the cost correct, is that what was, I was at that meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, I agree with him.
Whether they had to be published every time or whether they can approve it and we can hold on to the end for a publishing of the totality of everything?
You can enforce them as a publishing.
That's kind of what I figured too.
No, absolutely not. It would be, it would be more, I mean, maybe it would be more effective if we were, if we find that there is a cost associated with it that we have to do mass publishing, that we can continue moving forward, we can continue presenting the pieces to them and then give them a grand summary, I think that where they could approve all the orders.
But then that delays enforcement of everything we can change, yes.
So the first question was, does it have to be published?
Yes, yes.
Based on that one word change?
I think it has, what has to be published is the fact that you're changing these particular items, not necessarily print the entire wording of everything. It's just you, you gotta have to say, hey, if you'd like to come and go to our website or come into our office and view the changes that, but this is, the ordinance is that we're changing. At least that's the way it was explained to me in the past, because that has been a question that.
Jeff, all last?
Again, I, I've seen communities go both ways with it. I think it really depends on their attorneys. In a lot of cases, just posting the sections that are changing and then making a note that's available for review at the village offices and on the website, that could be sufficient. I think we just need to get a read on it, 'cause I think as, as the electronic provision of data has come out there, people are being more, we're seeing more communities just putting it out that way.
So, um.
What has it ever, anybody's ever seen zoning ordinance printed out in newspaper?
I can imagine. I mean, you'd be, it'd be the best thing ever happened to newspapers.
Okay, so that's where we're at, one way forward, and you, um, do you have an opinion on that?
Sure, Monday, Chris, July night.
Can't make it.
Okay, we're moving on to zoning sign ordinance review. Everybody get a chance to look that over or think about what we discussed last time? And then Jeff, do you wanna start?
Yeah, I guess, I, I think what we put in front of you guys with this latest, uh, distribution documents is, uh, what, what, this, let's come together as a final draft. We've looked at the elements that were in section 425, I think it was, of the, um, just general ordinance and the sign work that had been done within those own ordinance. This is pretty much pulling the best of both worlds and trying to incorporate all the comments and concerns that you folks had at the last meeting. Kind of reorganized this in, I think, a little more contemporary way, where we're talking about mission, talking about the purpose, we kind of talked about signs that we just read off the bat and don't regulate, the signs that are just outright prohibited before we start going into the general regulations describing the signs. So, um, as opposed to, to, to me talking and go through this, I don't, if everyone, I don't know if everyone's had a chance to review it, if you guys have the comments, I'm prepared to, I've got the document, I'm prepared to make notes and changes as we go through it. We can go through as, as far as you guys are going. I was kinda thinking if, if we could get through the purpose, uh, the prohibited signs, the permitted signs, and then take them and revisit the section on the temporary signs, 'cause we had a lot of discussion about that last time in terms of what we wanna see. That would help, uh, be, help me solidify into definitions section, because that needs to be, we have definitions that have kind of, looks like they've been pulled from other ordinances, they've been combined, we have signs defined in our definitions that don't necessarily exist in the ordinance and vice versa, so I wanna make sure that those all match up, so it's a little bit more concise of this. They wanna see what is a monument sign that will there have our definition. So, with that, I'll turn it over to you guys, if you have questions to go over that.
I guess I'll just ask, 'cause everybody had enough time, what they feel like we've got this in the past few days, so if everybody had enough time to put the energy they want to into it, or is it something that we want to do with the, you know, online feedback or do we wanna do that now? Anybody prepared to do it now?
I am.
I'm.
I may have read through a little bit of it, but I don't know. I mean, now it's fairly, it's a fairly large document.
Yeah, the online communication back and forth probably suffice. Comments Brian has and, uh, Mariette now from either.
Okay, so you wanna just proceed then, I know Tracy said you're, you're prepared, you wanna go as a totality to proceed with just the online communication and then be prepared for, you know, a shared input next month?
Is there anything, Jeff, you wanna go over? There, there, there really wasn't anything, anything in here. I, I just wanted to make sure that I encapsulated all of everybody's comments and that I've got all the different items in there. And like I said, as I was looking at the temporary sign things, I know that we had discussions of certain types of temporary signs, we wanted certain textile window signs we felt were permissible, but then we were talking about just, you know, proportions of windows and things like that. So I would say, you know, if I had the best of you guys, take the time to read through it. The individual, once you get to the, the later sections, there's an individual section that will talk about each type of sign, and then there's a dissection that says basically what signs are allowed and what discharges. And there's this table that's kind of simplified, this is a schedule of regulations. So someone said, I would say, well, family, can I have a banner sign? They read across and just flat out say no. So take a look at that. I, I think the, the document is completed at this point. If there's items you wanna change, we can do that next time, but, uh, I think we're moving closer to just having the section wrapped up. Yes, if you guys feel happy to.
So you want me to provide questions in the. Let's, yeah, if you can, so that way he can review it as a totality of all of our input, as opposed to just throwing it and all of him. Okay, anybody else, anything else that I know you had some, did you wanna discuss your, your stuff, Rob, or?
No, itself is mandatory. Obviously, I'll put my notes in the, in, since everyone is putting in notes, I'll put it. 'Cause one of the things I, I'm just concerned about was the, the awning signs. And then the board has decided to keep those, but I'd like to see some, some, some tighter reins put on them so that, um, some of the dopes that I put in pictures don't come to fruition, uh, for us. And consistency with a particular. The Pet Salon is the only one of those on that whole place and it stands out for the sign guy in the business, but it looks like crap compared to everybody else's nicely professional, um, signs put up over the business. But I'll put all that in.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna move on then to new business. President Dilbert to speak on, um, some zoning considerations.
Hi.
Things changed already, right?
And this, I'm, I'm sorry, President Dilbert, just this, um, this part of the email that you received, I think, yesterday or the day before, Jeff, did you send that up?
I sent out an email just to put up with background information. I thought that the, the petitioner might have potentially be here.
Right, so if you guys had a chance to review that email, this is what that is a reference to.
Yeah, it says, uh, for consideration, obviously, that, you know, what, uh, the owner of the railroad property, um, build hardware stores, make storage shed, and bring elevator property, I think they're, this is just in zone designation right now, general office and general business downtown, it's something that I'd say. And just give them some fun about that whole triangle from the tracks of Haven Ridge back down Division, uh, excluding the, um, two houses that are on Division, uh, east of Haven Ridge. And I don't know, you know, what the condition, I think he's gonna be asking for that to be rezoned to Light Industrial. And what I was thinking is, you know, wouldn't it be better off if we just took that whole pie and made it Light Industrial? And having some discussions, uh, do we have the ability to rezon it with some restrictions? I guess that's the question. You know, uh, while Light Industrial may allow machine shops and things of that nature, that's not what, that is not what we want in that area. But if we can somehow, um, change the designation, rezon this pie, but restrict the use, or are we better off, of course, that just on a special approval, special land use approval or some other mechanism which would give the owner of the family property and in that pie, ability to own some property, give us opportunities to maybe attract businesses that you normally wouldn't allow in, in that general business, general business downtown and just makes, the right now you're kind of restricted as to what's allowed. Even on the railroad tracks, it's kind of restricted to offices or, you know, things that are probably better suited for a different setting than that on the railroad tracks. And I don't know if we can restrict, you know, um, once you go into, say, Light Industrial, is it just Light Industrial, period? Or can we change it with some, some restrictions? And I guess that's a question for Jeff and for the attorneys.
Generally, if you're to rezon Light Industrial, it would, it would fall under all of the rules and regulations of Light Industrial. So again, you would open it up to all of those, all of those uses. The packet that I put together for everybody here tonight kind of describes what the current zoning is, what the current disposition of the property is. And I'm not necessarily putting forth any different, um, uh, necessary suggestions in terms of how to handle it, but there are some options. One option is obviously to rezon the property. In talking to Chris, the petitioner and the owner, he was concerned about the hardware property which he owns. He has, he described a number of tenants that he has that are leasing space that, I think he said one person's doing furniture repair and that. He has someone who's actually leasing some storage space and I don't, I don't recall the others. Under the, that, that property itself is zone general business downtown. Under general business downtown, it is not, none of those uses are clearly, there's not even one clear definition that covers those uses. There are permitted uses for services, personal services. There's also for people, there's also for retail that manufactures and creates a product and sells it on the site. It's open for interpretation, I believe, to state, does the current use that's being, is there, is it nonconforming or is it not? That would be something for this group to make that decision. The property, just in talking about the grainery property behind, that is zone residential office. That is a unique zone that the village has had since, uh, since I put in 1998, uh, zone ordinance. That, that is looking for residential properties and then also, um, residential office that would be like attorneys, doctors, those types of, you know, professional service types of offices. And I don't know that there are any of those that currently even operate in that zone. So that's the, that's the zoning that's on the grainery property. When the petitioner or the potential petitioner initially came to the village in 2013 and approached the village about the grainery property, um, was one of the first things that we did as being on board, as your best planist in the county. We, um, the recommendation from, from Pat, the former, um, planner, talking to a couple other people, since the grainery property is unique, it's in the community, it's, um, it's been there longer than zoning has, so it's obvious it's a nonconforming use. It's had a number of different similar uses that it actually operated, like it was operated as a feed store at all point in time. But it's not the type of property that someone's gonna come in, make a big investment, spend a ton of money to haul away the silos and stuff like that. So that was one of the concerns. How do we get, how do you have a viable business in there yet allow them to continue the use that and not turn it into a doctor's type of office? So one of the mechanisms that is in the zoning ordinance is there is an element of conforming, nonconforming uses. There are two different classes that are zoning ordinance. One is a Class A and one is a Class B designation. These designations are granted by the ZBA and a petitioner or the village itself can, submit an application for that type of consideration. And what that basically means is, under a Class B, um, nonconforming, basically it states that the village recognizes that this was a use that was in place before zoning came in, well, we, we would really like to see it go, not continue, uh, because, because it's either doing harm to the, there's, there's a whole host of negatives about it. Then there's the Plan A that's intentioned, that says this is a use, it's a viable use that's been in before zoning. But under a Class A designation, basically states that, um, that the community accepts it, will allow it to continue to operate, uh, that the continuance is not contrary to public health, safety and welfare, the use of the structure does not, is not likely to, um, change the value of nearby properties because it's always been there. And that the use of the structure was lawful at the time of the inception of the zoning ordinance. And I think mostly, in, in case of the grainery, um, that was looked at by ZBA as the fact that no useful purpose would be served by strict application of the provisions of the ordinance. You know, you would, if we said nothing's gonna go there under the residential office, we would most likely have the grainery property sitting there with nobody making the investment there. So with that said, under, under the Class A designation, that allows a person to change the structure, it can be altered, it can be enlarged, as long as it doesn't violate any conditions. And can conditions can be placed on a nonconforming use. A nonconforming use say would be allow this to continue as long as it's owned by owner X who are the petitioner. There can be a number of different types of conditions as to the performance, what has to happen there. The good thing about a nonconforming use is though, is that one person who has it wants to make that improvement, change the parking and stuff like that, then they are required to do a formal site plan and go through all of the development requirements of the community to try to bring the property up to what's the current standard of this. So that is an option there as well, but I guess it depends on how you would want to wield that option as to what your desired outcome for that area is. Rezoning it to Light Industrial poses a whole host of other issues, because not only do you have, as Chris, you know, you have uses that you don't necessarily want, they're, you have a very irregular shaped piece of property that if we zoned it Light Industrial, wouldn't need any of our Light Industrial setbacks in terms of fronting. You have, we would create a non-hilable lot, essentially, or potentially create non-hilable lots there. So there's kind of conundrum of how to move forward in that, um, in that vein. Now, I think what the petitioner was looking for was to be able to, he's done facade improvements, but I think he wants to be able to continue the uses of that building that he has, um, and then be able to continue to do any types of improvements to the property. He has expressed the interest in the potential and also the purchase of the automotive repair, I forget the name of the place, but Haven Ridge, uh, which is another very weird irregular property and another nonconforming use.
That adds up to the front of his and the back.
Then it comes in the.
The left side. It rubs around, yeah, it just goes up.
Yeah.
They touch.
So, okay. Yeah, and then you got houses in between.
And you do, you do have, you do, uh, two, at least two single family residential houses there, and the property that Chris indicated the village owns, it's a set aside for future development of municipal buildings at some point.
So he was talking about possibly buying that?
He, he indicated an interest in it, but I don't, I, I can't speak, I can't speak for him, it just came up in the discussion.
But what about the, the way I understand is, when, when he came there, and obviously the use he's using it for is not the use that he's supposed to be using it for, that it was stated that as long as you don't rip down the, um, the elevator, you know, we're not bugging you about. not bugging you about, you know, the use that you're using for that is not zoned for. Is that correct, that's the way he was giving it to me? Was that during your?
There was a conversation about retain, there, no, there was not that conversation. There was not, he presented what he presented and he was, there was a deep conversation about retaining the elevator and possibly restoring it. There was some conversations about pure grants and a bunch of different stuff to sort of help with that, but no, there was never a, a you do this and we'll do that kind of side deal or, or anything like that. He was given permission to, um...
Was the owner that was telling you this?
Right, no, there, right now he's probably, he's probably exceeding the request right now that he made. I'd have to pull it up.
Well, he was pulling, um, I don't know what they're called, you, the, the poles that come off the elevator, you know, that feed the grain into, you know, he was pulling off and disclosing those things.
I do recall that there were elements and there were structures on the site that the building department did look at, and he did raise one of the buildings in the back and with the agreement that if there were others where that weren't usable, he would. I know there was a grain storage that had elevators, a building with an elevated floor that was for grain storage. That was deemed to be, um, structurally sound and that's continuing to be used for storage out there.
Yeah, he's done some improvements to it to retain it.
Right. And again, there, there were, there were structures and elements that were taken off of the silo because they were considered to be, I remember taking a look and saying some of those things need to come down for safety reasons.
So is there a way as a village that we can retain the, the elevator as part of our community so that we don't lose that building, it doesn't get torn down?
Outside, outside of urgency.
Well, I know, but I don't know what historical, um...
I was gonna ask, actually, is there?
Room blocks you can put to not tear down something that is of historic, historical value to the community?
Is there a historical zoning?
There is not necessarily historical zoning, there's generally historical districts that it works as an overlay, but that's a district that has a commission that's been operating on it. There's a long way, there's a long road to get to that. And generally, even once you have a historical commission, you can put on some of those regulatory rules, like Romeo's a good example, they have facade things. If you are designated as, if your house has been designated as being historical, there are certain elements that you have to replace the same types of wood, different materials of that. As far as keeping someone from tearing structure down, unless it was on something on the historic register, I don't know that a community has that without having physical control over it or anything.
Okay, here is the direction. The direction requires zoning variance through ZBA, so in all honesty, I have no idea what happened at ZBA, but the property is currently zone residential office and they're requesting a class A non-conforming designation of development of masonry related business and storage. And that's how it came through, was that was, what was supposed to be going there. And I do recall that's what was approved at ZBA, it was not coming here, but he was doing like a masonry and storage thing.
So I guess I have a two-part question. My first question would be for Chris, if you, you wanna change, you're suggesting it changed also light industrial and use in sample of businesses?
I don't have an offer.
In terms of, yeah.
This is what I really wanted to do, is start this discussion, because I know the petitioner, or I think he's gonna come before this board to make a request, okay? And, and I guess I'm gonna know ahead of him, that until he makes this request, that I thought he should have waited and then maybe try to piggyback on hits, because, you know, one night it worked out, or at least mine, ours wouldn't work, put up hits, if you put it like that. But there are some things, like I said, because we do own property in that triangle, the building owns, owns property in the triangle that, that, I'm calling it a triangle of power.
Yeah.
And there's these two different zoning designations in that area that if somehow we just make it, I don't know, easier.
Could we do an overlay over that district to, um, put specific target businesses into it and then to, that would help him with setbacks and, um, you know, if he uses a little bit of it for industrial or, you know, he talked about maybe an office or a restaurant in front of the property, um, so it would be a very mixed use is what he was discussing. So is there a way for us to put an overlay over that district to allow, um, a variety of uses? You know, basically he comes through with a plan and a layout of that property, we improve it as is, as a mixed use or an overlay?
It's, it's not exactly, no. I, I would say no, you can't do an overlay district there, because the question, what would that overlay district be? Generally, an overlay district would be something that goes, something that puts another set of non-related type of parameters on the property. You can have industrial property, but then you can overlay it to the flood zone and then that would restrict it all on a certain, you can't have it, you couldn't say this is general business downtown, but this special district only allows these types of uses. Essentially, you're getting a spot zoning and you get some issues with that.
Even though that property is so irregular, because like you're saying, his own part of it, industrial would be, you can't build nothing there, but yet, because it's against the track, if they have good uses of part of the industrial.
The general business district does, in, in the ordinance itself, it does try to promote mixed use, but the mixed use that it's spelling out is more of a commercial residential type of mix. You know, the beginning, I think the concept is more of downstairs, upstairs, you know, that type, or you have more of a traditional downtown. The fact that you have an area that's, that's, that's next to the tracks, but does not have a rail spur to actually service is more of a nuisance than it is a benefit. So again, it's a great place to put industrial. Um, is the trains meant to be anything for other than, yeah, it's, it's just, it's just more of a system. In our zoning ordinance, we allow for planned unit development and we allow for planned unit development in residential, heavy industrial and money industrial areas. But we have a, we have a twenty acre minimum of land size, so that could be a tool to deal with a property like this. If, if PUD was changed or if a different type of mixed, MXT, like a mixed unit development, zoning classification we created for the, for the village and it would be applicable to an area more than just this one little spot, that would be a way of potentially moving forward.
I don't think I'd get creative with this little spot, obviously he wants to do so, but man hasn't money.
Did he say we want to? If we didn't have, if we didn't have a limitation on, for, did he say we want?
We couldn't make areas work to allow him this special use?
It would be more, it would be more appropriate to make a change to the ordinance to just strengthen the minimum and just that if someone comes with a viable plan, the village would accept it. I'm not sure what the idea of twenty acre minimum was, other than if they were just thinking residential at that size, they want to have some divisions of certain sizes, that's my guess. But with that, with that potential, just, and I'm not saying this is the best solution, you could have light industrial, you could come in with a PUD plan and say, within five years, if you have time with it on a PUD, it would be built out, I would do this improvement, this improvement, and I'm looking to do this type of mixed use. You could then approve that as a conceptual multiple, multi-site plan. It'll give you some control, because the community could put in stipulations, could put in a lot of elements that if this doesn't, you know, if you build it and you don't get your parking lots paid by this point in time and drainage, then we execute, you know, pull on or hold those numbers. That's one way of going. That's a really heavy lift in terms of administrative, of all the things that we need to change though, to get to, to get to working with that property.
Well, maybe it's a very worthy project to do, so that we can spur development downtown with the use of this mixed use of PUD to spur other developments. I mean, if he, like I said, in talking to him, he says, you know, like the restaurant maybe in the front, um, you know, that center section, he's got, he's got different, you mentioned the furniture storage zone, but maybe give him the ability to have an open air flea market in that spot, which is across the park from, you know, kind of joined with the park and the music and the, uh, restaurant and...
Does that jump him?
Well, he wants to find a way to make money out of it. And I think we gotta help, help him in a way of making it unique. The restaurant part in the front was yes, that would be, would make a good spot, kind of put, uh, he asked if he could, if he thought we could put a patio out front, which would kind of tie into, uh, Rose Cellar and Nerd, Sebo and, you know, it flows together. And then changing his zoning so that the cement area can remain, um, there and if it's all part of that PUD, maybe that's a way to keep the elevator as well, as him providing a benefit to the community.
You, you could, you could, you guys could do all of those things, but I would say you have to change the language from he to any, to they, because the day that you make that change, you could sell that property. And I guess we have to look for the, I mean, I think the most important thing, we know, I think we know what the community wants, it's, it's expressed that in the master plan. We'd like to see commercial downtown type of stuff. Then we look at what we have that's on the site. If we don't have what we want, we lease blunt viable businesses as opposed to a building that's sitting vacant, not generating tax, not generating any, any revenue dollars. My concern would be that, and you could, yeah, how you approach it is how do you?
I think we need to be very careful about zoning that light industrial.
Me too.
Okay, um...
Sounds like your idea is that fees may, I think it's not just small.
But at the same time, I think we also have to be careful as to where we direct him and not accommodate him. So I think, you know, as long as he's doing stuff over there with, you know, furniture repair and such, I think we find a way to accommodate him from this end, you know, because there isn't anybody that's come to us with a bigger, better thing right there and it does sound like he wants to, you know, make some improvements and make, make the corner look better and, and all those sorts of things, but as I've mentioned before, when we were talking about this, I think we've got to decide from a planning commission, all of us, where we draw, are we willing to draw along with what we want and what we're willing to accept? And, you know, by making those compromises for everybody who walks through the door because it's just a viable business, you know, do we give them light industrial? Because that's viable and it works right now, or do we work towards a future goal? Because everybody's got something, everybody comes in here, has a plan and it's not ours. So...
In order to, he would be willing to put our ideas and thoughts into build that if we allow him to build it.
I agree with you, but I think you're opening up that light industrial option, he could go on more.
I'm saying we, we can't do that.
Yeah, so...
Like, well, I mean, the one parcel at the top would fit that bill, the lower part is not going to fit.
You're talking about the, the grainery is actually on?
Yeah, the upper portion of the lot up there is probably, probably large enough to, uh...
It really doesn't have the setbacks that you're...
How much is it worth?
But in a PUD, you're, you're altering those setbacks.
You are, but you also, when you get to the north side though, you, you do have residential there and I would say you do need to respect those individuals out there. If, if, if I would give my suggestion, um, to, for consideration, um, if you, the, the non-conforming class A use, giving him that designation of her property or, or, or entertaining that would allow, if we, if this group was to work with ZBA to put the conditions on there, um, to define the types of uses that he would, to define like those services and give him a broad enough parameters that allow him to operate within that. My concern is, is that when he came in, we gave him a, not that, not that he's doing any various, but through, through not doing our proper enforcement, other businesses have been, there should have been a request for a business change. The building department should have caught or stopped, in a term, the process of any other tenants that were coming. So now he's coming to us and saying, I have tenants, I know what I'm doing is right, I want to be able to be right. So I think if you, if you, if you create the box, you want him to operate it, then you can, you can put that with that over in the property. If that were to change, it just reverts back to a regular non-conforming use and what uses is class A, the next person purchased it, hopefully develops it to our like needs to address them again with that non-conforming type.
No, we don't even issue business licenses in this community.
No, but I believe, I believe that there are some, I believe there is some process that builds a business change or something, he's got a scale of, look at the...
On this?
You know, there should be.
Do we don't want to last to...
Oh, yeah.
There should be a lot of things, but it'd be great.
Reminding Nancy Hoss, just right now, is my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, is, well, the immediate goal is to bring himself into compliance, which he's not currently, because he is working and or has other businesses in there working out of the zone that he was a lot. So his first goal is to bring him into compliance and then moving forward is to open up, um, a broader, um, broader businesses that he can bring into, to fill the voids. I, I think there was some storage, um, automotive stuff.
Yeah, he has someone operating an automotive repair type of facility at the, at the grainery plant. Um, there's some disassembled parts, he said, I think he sells used parts, I understand, that's the way it was, that's the way it was described. Um, I don't know all the tenants that are on the, we're sure of something. He did indicate, uh, that he was wanting to be able to offer some type of outdoor storage at the grainery property in the back, which could potentially be permitted, um, if, you know, with the right variance, as long as the right screening and that wasn't provided, so it doesn't bring up the fence and uses to the residents that are nearby. He indicated that one of the people who was interested or art and story was the guy who downloaded subs trailers. I guess some of his editorial workers, tempers, putting up at this site has not had a, over here or so.
Sounds like he wants to put five gallons of material in three gallon bucket.
And honestly, I will say, I think if you go back to our, I think he is compliant with storage, just not available storage.
Correct. Yeah, the inside storage is fine, indoor storage is permitted in the general business district. Also, our ordinance is, is very vague, but it says that, it says that outside storage is permitted for equipment and machinery in the general downtown business district as long as it follows the village's nuisance ordinance. Then if you order the nuisance ordinance and read that, you don't, there's not a connection. Like it doesn't spell out specifically, like this should be screened, this should be fenced, it just says, it's very, very...
No, it has some, the one building down there that has a storage, I think there's been some action and stuff on, based on something. Do you know which one I'm referring to?
No, I'm not sure.
Across from the post office, uh, see trailers, little...
That's the trailer guy, that, yeah, he, we, there was, there was action dating of, he was cited a couple of times because he was storing that on the lot, hasn't received before people walked up and I think he's, I think he's has a contract with this owner that he's putting over there.
And then to put a roof on his building without pulling a single permit and...
I spoke to him many times on the phone.
You know, in that, in, in the old hardware store property there, the actual front end store is built, but the back of it is just, I mean, it, it looks like an old, you know, you pulled your buggy up and your wagon and it was even with the back of this place and it's just metal side, there's no insulation, there's no walls inside per se. You know, so it's, I don't think he's looking per se to change that either, you know, to make it into a building of sorts, but to find a way to use that, um, that property like in storage. And that's why I'm saying, maybe there's a way we can find a, a unique way to make that into an open flea market, which would be a drawout, which would, I'm looking to try to find some way to use that. which would be a drawout, which would, I'm looking, trying to find some way to use that property to sort of unique in a way that we can draw something to the rest of the community.
But he has to be willing to do that work, Robin, is.
Oh, I think he is. He's trying to find a use for it, that he's gonna make some money. Now, if he can generate people to come to that property and he has a restaurant in the front that he can charge three grand a month for because he's got such a great amount of traffic, all that stuff helps him. He's looking to make money. He's not per se opposed to trying to do something that benefits the whole village.
I guess we are good, I don't think that, I just.
He was very, very friendly. I mean, really nice guy, talking length about, he was pretty much willing to do anything to try and make money and if it benefits the village, which helps benefit him, he's all for it.
I think most importantly though, I'm sorry, John, is that we all have to make a decision based on the same and equal information. So I think it may be important that he comes and addresses all of us with, you know, because you have a part of the story, John has part of the story, John has part of the story, it sounds like Chris does. So in order for us all to make an informed decision, I think it's very important that we all have the same information.
Yeah, because he may have updated information between the last time.
Right, and in all fairness, he hasn't done anything with the village except for reached out. So there's no formal request, there's no request to be on it, although I've been told he doesn't intend about it. He has not reached out to Chris and has he?
Yeah, we, I spoke to him, he came into our offices to talk to us a little bit about what he was doing and it was, you know, getting vague. That was the meeting we had on the 21st, because his, his main office is right in Mont Clemence. So it's just, we met early in the morning as opposed to all coming out here. I, I agree, but I would wait to see what action he takes. I, the reason I gave you guys all the background information is kind of to say, hey, these are kind of the options that are out on the table, at least the items that will be discussed. So obviously, there's more information in the zoning ordinance in that, in that piece. I just tried to pull up the main sections. I think that, I do think that the, the non-conforming Class A, although it isn't the perfect fix, it's probably has the most, it's on the books and gives you the most flexibility. The only issue is we're not the ones who issue it, the CVA. So it would kind of be a coordinated dance between this group and the CVA to see that, you know, the village's best interest is, is there and whatever conditions we can place on them. Those conditions become as recommendations from this board. But I would see, let's see how it proceeds. I was expecting him to be here. I was under pressure he was gonna be here tonight. At least initially introduced himself and did not raise it to. I think I agree, we need to hear from him and then you guys will be able to pose questions directly to him.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's all speculative.
Yeah.
But without, I mean, if we did change the PUD ordinance and we had something to offer him versus nothing, except to say, hey, you know, you can do this and you can tear this down and do that, it doesn't really benefit and create attraction to downtown that we overall need to proceed down there. So it just seems to me like if we come up with something to say, hey, we got X amount of property here and these are the things that we can help you with to provide, you know, some joint ideas on how to make this property viable both for you and the village, that it benefits the downtown. Because if it just ends up, a storage yard and a, and a car storage, it's, it's not, has no value and it doesn't protect the elevator as a historical piece. It's all, none of it's gonna benefit the whole downtown as a, as a whole if we don't come up with something creative.
Well, one of the things I would suggest is that these juices have been going, I mean, he may come before us. What, you may want to just be very upfront and go, we are, you do not want to entertain light industrial. And, but if, if, if no enforcement actions are being taken or anything, I think this group has, we have, is where we're gonna go after the science section is we're gonna go into the individual districts. We'll have the opportunity to look at PUD and look at the light industrial and see if those numbers that we have, you know, like for the setbacks and the frontages and that, do they meet the land we have left in the community? So we might be able to build some of those wholesale fixes in, recognizing this and it might just be an issue of telling the landlord, well, we just may want to wait until we get through that process, see what, what evolves as an ordinance and then answer the request after that. It might, his needs better, or he may still request the non-conforming use or maybe still request a zoning, you know, a change in the district. Again, with, with the master plan, that's a five-year document, you know, we're halfway through. I think we're seeing some things already in the master plan that may not necessarily fit or maybe the effect of the economy or the economics of what we want to see in certain areas isn't panning out. And changes that you make to the, any changes that you make to the zoning ordinance now, I think we would want to look at in light of how that affects any changes to the master plan and the overall direction of any one group or area. The one thing I did, as I wasn't sure how we were gonna, we were gonna get into the discussions tonight and I apologize that you guys have, but I'm gonna hand these guys, I've got a current zoning map for everybody and then also what's in the master plan as the future land use map. So we can kind of take a look at these and see if they, if they jive. And again, as we move forward, there's future of these other sections, so the guy can be able to use.
Okay, will we move on if everybody's good? Matters for discussion? Anyone?
Nothing here.
Public comments, planning report.
Number four.
And adjournment, so motion to adjourn?
Eight sixteen.
Second. All in favor?
All right.